Welcome everyone, 7:02 it's our June monthly meeting, our business meeting when we hear from our departments and standing boards and our municipal partners. Clerk may have a roll call please.
Mayor Foley.
Yeah.
Trusty Bozey.
Yeah.
Trusty Woods.
Yeah.
Trusty Starbuck.
Yeah.
And trusty Faddy is absent now.
Yep. Okay, opportunity to request a vote, I would like to change a general item, I would like to table under the police department, I'd like to table the hiring of the parking enforcement officer, there is potential schedule conflict that we need to sort out before we're ready to roll on that, so hopefully Larry will know an answer within the next couple of days on that, so that'll be on the agenda next week. Under announcements, does anyone have any information that the public should know? For reports, the one announcement I would make is that we've had a number of inquiries about what to do with your old garbage cans during the transition time when we were trading bins in and out and getting bin deliveries, we had a dumpster at the highway department available. It is gone now, that period has ended, but you can still bring your your bin down to the highway department and Bugsy will crush it and put it in our dumpster, I would just ask that you set a time, call the call the village hall or email, set a time with clerk so we know someone's actually at the highway department to receive what you have. Okay. Reports from village departments, Jeff, do you want to address accountant?
Worked on the base of the year end reports with June 1st starting with fiscal year, salaries had to be adjusted and a little tricky one because yeah. Have to have to pay for the new fiscal year and the new one, so that was taken care of, we have the dump truck should be ready to be delivered here within the next couple of weeks, so we have gone out to requested quotes for financing. So we've gotten to the three requested and wait on them to bank. The list third one, those are the big ones.
And I know Michelle is calling through this consolidated funding grants to see if there are possibilities for us, we end up being in a middle spot frequently where the project might be something we could use money for, you know, the the concept of the grants, but we don't qualify either for income or population size. But there are a couple under parks and historic preservation that may be a possibility, so Michelle's digging down into that a little bit. Okay, roadways and facilities, Bugsy is, I don't believe he's with us, he is, I'm happy to say he is up in Ithaca, at Ithaca College for a few days, attending the highway superintendent's school, he's wanted to do this training for a really long time, and we're we're happy to send him and hope he comes back with lots of good things to teach all of us here. A couple of, a couple of quick things, you've seen that folks are painting crosswalks, the rest of the team is painting crosswalks and parking spaces this week. Someone raised the question of why aren't you filling the holes, there are repairs, we are aware that there are repairs that need to happen in some of the crosswalks and they will happen, but some of the crosswalks where the marking is very difficult to see and we're concerned as traffic picks up and gets heavy that we can see the crosswalks clearly, so sort of a two-part process. Big items from highway, water and wastewater, we have Matt Crewe with us, our superintendent to talk us through a couple of things or some highlights in your report, and then if you could talk us through the request from the town of Phillips Town.
There we go. Alright, so we're pretty much exactly where we were last year, reservoir status, the system usage continues to go down 3%, it's not as big as it was, but we are entering the summer months. Bacteria samples were all found in good standing, the chemical pump uniformity upgrade is partially received by the distributor. He's going to come down and help us install it when the complete order is received, so waiting on an update on that. Still need to put the said basin floating skimmer back in to get that online. Badger endpoint installation, the sunset date is still December of this year, so we do have to move forward on that. The aqueduct, well, let me just go over that, the filter refurbishment, I did start reaching out to West Tech and GA Fleet again to try and see where we're at with quoting for that refurbishment project. The aqueduct connection, I don't have any updates.
I have an update for you.
Okay.
It's gonna be in my report, but so that you can, don't have to sit through the whole meeting to hear it.
Appreciate it.
When we, for a hot minute, had Senator Scoopeth as our senator, he set us up with meetings with the DEP and the DEC related to the dam, the dam repair. And one of the big outstanding issues was connection to the Catskill Aqueduct, so that our, we have a water supply while our dam is drained down and repaired. And initially, the DEP had wanted the formation of a water district for the two villages and about thirteen houses in Phillips Town, and we made the argument with the senator that this is nuts in creating another layer of government and another taxation entity for a temporary hookup seems crazy. And the DEP has shifted its thinking on that. They are now willing to give a five-year temporary hookup without a water district because beyond that, we would need to form a district. And the, they have, as part of the work they did in 2021, installed the I'm gonna say.
Syphon tubes.
Plant, the salvage syphon plant, is that it?
Yes, syphon tube, that are blind plant, yes.
The blind plant, so that's ready for us to connect to. So they sent Matt, they were, they're sending us an agreement, obviously, we don't want to sign that agreement until we're ready to do the the dam work because it's a timed thing, but we at least now have that in place so that we can proceed with the dam, and we are tomorrow, tomorrow meeting with an engineering firm, hoping that this is the firm we can bring on board to keep that moving forward as well, and the commissioner was the deputy commissioner was very keen to work with us because he understands how important the timing is and the coordination of the two projects because the Catskill Dam will go off will go offline a few times for repairs, so we need our backup source so that they can do their work. So, timing is everything.
That's great. Yeah, no, that's good. That's really good stuff.
Thank you to Senator Scoopeth, and we are, well, this mayor is the police staff, we won't be working with you further, but thank you for what you've been able to do for us in the short time we did have you onboard. Can you talk us through the Phillips Town connection?
Yeah, so they.
The deputy supervisor.
Right, so I did get a chance to look at the, it over, it looks good on paper, I have no issues with the material being used and the proposed design. Like I said, we do have a hydrant in stock that we could do with the relocation, we would just have to do a little bit of work to see who we could get to do, I guess, the villages side of this project, because I believe that's outside.
Could you explain in really simple terms what the project is?
Oh, basically, just a new water service, slightly bigger, well, they had a three-quarter, so yeah, a bigger water service going into their new building garage to supply their needs for the building and grounds.
And the, the architect, well, I guess it came in under the architect, but presumably he worked with an engineer, just is what he is the request appropriate for specifications, is it what you want to see for this connection?
Yeah, I think there was maybe one additional valve to put in to act as the individual, because I think where it was shown on the design, it was before the T, so that would actually shut off the service and the hydrant, so I think we would need an additional valve put in there for the separation, so we could still have water to one or the other as we needed to isolate them. Because right now, it's just, I think it's using off the street valve that's already in existence as the domain, and then there's another one, I think, prior to the T, where it would branch off for the hydrant, and that would be the only isolation valve for both the building and the hydrant, if I'm remembering that drawing correctly.
So it, it meets the specifications that you would like it to meet?
Yeah.
Okay. This is your language, not our language, so we are, however, under code the Board of Water Commissioners and need to approve this request, any questions from that, from the trustees? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
We can make a motion to approve the request from Phillips Town to connect to our water.
Yeah, at the highway building.
That's how we're going.
Second? Okay, sorry. All in favor? Hi, hi, good luck with that.
We had a meeting today and it came up, so I was told you're going to be voting on it.
Okay. I think that's everything on water and wastewater right now?
Uh, just a quick update on the JWC grinder equipment, they were supposed to start today, but he got called out early this morning for an emergency, so he's gonna be on site tomorrow to drop all of his rigging equipment and hopefully start on Friday, but other than that, yeah, no, nothing else on the wastewater side of things.
That's the auger?
Yes, auger and the grinder, auger's gonna get done first because that's currently out, and then we'll move on to the grinder after the auger's back completely.
And it would be great if you and Laura could connect to get her down to see what's what, then she'll know what we're talking, what we're talking about.
Definitely, just, oh, you do stop by, I'll give you the 50 cent tour, no problem.
Okay. You're welcome to stay with us, but we recognize that you're having your home evening times, if you want to hop off, have a good evening.
Yeah, gotta make sure homework's done, so I will see you guys in the morning.
Bye.
Bye.
Code enforcement, we are going to do a better job of requesting a report from, from Greg, his quick note, what, not his fault, we didn't ask until late. They have hired a second inspector in the town, that person is focused on fire, is doing training.
Yeah, last month I reported, I thought he started, but he didn't start until last week, so he's, I called him this morning and he's, he's here, so it's good.
And Jeff, as the, the receiver of applications at the village level, how's it going?
Fine.
Excellent. That's really good to hear, fine, okay.
Good system now.
Excellent. Okay. Police Department, the officer in charge isn't able to be with us, so I have a couple of quick things to tell you, Larry and I met pursuant to the proposal to establish a relationship with the hub, we met with Lori Siglos, who's the new executive director at the hub on Tuesday. She's fantastic, and she actually has a law enforcement background, training officers to deal with issues in a a trauma-informed way, so she's, she knows her way around law enforcement, and she is, she's going to be with her staff putting forward a couple of proposals, you'll recall that that we pulled money out of the budget from locational cameras and moved it to the hub, that was we were hoping to get something on the table before the end of the budget year, it didn't happen, so we'll need to do some creative thinking about how we pay for it in the coming year, but the commitment is there to do the work, and Lori's going to work with her board to make some proposals to us for sort of test pilot projects for training for our officers, and also 24-hour availability for our offers, officers for references on mental health calls and assistance, so I'm pretty excited about it, it's a, it's a great, it's a great vibe in Lori's office. And also as a follow-up related to police, Jeff was able to secure from Fran the spreadsheet of the sign work that she and Marie and Larry had done together last year, so we have that to work from, to go back and finish the loop on that, on the traffic updates, the signs, sign updates. Okay, tweet, you want to do fire company?
Sure.
Here's the big, the big item is oh, that we haven't talked about.
Oh, yeah. So there's a new truck. Um, it is, I think, right now, is it in the station?
Lil? I'm not sure if it's back or not.
Yeah, I don't think it's back yet, yes.
Fit it out.
Yeah, I don't know what the term is, but it's getting, we'll say it's getting outfitted, and it looks amazing, it's very high-tech and that's about all I can say about it, because I, I don't know any but it's, it's good news and well-deserved and needed, so that's great. Do you want me to do the report too, or?
Sure.
Okay. Um, the chief's report is 15 calls from May, they had three activated fire alarms, one EMS assist, two motor vehicle accidents, one natural gas odor, one gas line spill, gasoline spill, excuse me, one brush fire, one possible structure fire, and mutual aid to North Highlands, mutual aid for a brush fire and a fuel spill there, and mutual aid request to East Fish.
And there were some, if you have a look at the fire company's website and Facebook page, some cool pictures of, I think, I think I saw Flarety on a jacket in the photographs, training with North Highlands on vehicle extrication.
Used last week. We, last week or week before we had that bill.
They actually have a new Instagram account as well, they're, they're quite prolific online, so.
That's good. A note for, for folks in the public. The fire company exists sort of in two pieces, the department of the village and there's a 501(c)(3), the 501(c)(3) saves the money and purchases the vehicle, so we own the building. They pay for and own the equipment, so this new truck has been in the works for quite some time, they get replaced about every 20 years, so.
Yeah, well, I know they want to have a page.
Yes.
Or have a, on our website.
Yeah.
I did create one, I just, for now, we need to have no content, so we need to cut that on itself, I'm sorry, I meant to type, but it's but I did, yeah, I need content.
Um, so I'll work with Aaron to to get that content, I know that they had it, and I think they were ready to go with it, so that's great.
It should be the stuff in an email.
Excellent.
Justice Court, in summary, in the last month, 25 vehicle and traffic cases, one civil case of those, there were 16 defendants, 26 charges, and the revenue of the corpse 3,633,40. Jeff, we're getting close to, we're getting into all of them?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the power of this.
I remember it being warm.
In the summer, yeah.
Okay. We have, we have Eric work with us. So reports of standing boards and committees, we restructured the, the agenda a little bit trying to make more sense of the flow of things. The big news from the historic district review board that I'm very happy to hear about is that today, they were meeting with the consultant who's been working on the design standards with them to submit their final edits, so I'm hoping that those are going to be available soon, otherwise it's fairly regular meetings. The planning board would like to have discussion, further discussion on 40 Main Street to think about review of that agreement in coming years, this is the parking agreement for the municipal lot, I have an appointment with Jack next Wednesday for that. Oh, is Jack on? Oh, Jack, did you, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Would you like to deliver your report yourself?
Yeah, can you?
Okay, I will, I'll keep going unless I hear, unless I hear your voice pop in, I'm really delighted to hear that the planning board has scheduled a meeting with a presentation from the lamp, the Fier Trail on June 23rd. So that's the tentative, that's the tentative date, so that'll be another opportunity for the public to listen in and, and make comment. Eric, Chair of our zoning board. Been quiet again, a quiet month again for you, but would you like to make any comment?
No, I have nothing to say, I just was here in case there's a question.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll mention though, I will, that I met this morning with Ted Fink to start the ball rolling on the process of updating the zoning code, chapter 134. It was a productive meeting, it went well, Donald McDonald and Paul Henderson were also there.
Fantastic, thank you very much. We do have to turn in to NYSARDA, which is was the grant entity for part of that project, we do need to turn in a work plan on June 10th. I think that your meeting was pursuant to that, right, establishing that? Okay, great. NYSARDA.
Correct.
Because portions of the zoning code now incorporate or should incorporate stretch code? It's not stretch code, Phillips Town's not stretch code, that's what I hope we can talk about next, this is a grant that began a number of years ago, so it's, it's pre-stretch code. We need to meet the requirements of NYSARDA under this version of the code, and then we can start talking about stretch code, I hope. Jack, and now I see your face, did you want to add anything on your report? No, okay. 6E rec commission, I know Jeff is not making it tonight, the, the big news from rec is that we have hired an events coordinator, this is another new position for the village, a lot of the event management fell to volunteer commission members, and it was a burden, so we now have a person who will be assisting folks who rent our park facilities checking the facilities before and after, Lillian Mosher is on the call now, I see her, hello, she's our events coordinator.
Good evening all, I'm in my car, so I'm just gonna sit back quietly.
I will follow up with you tomorrow, but Larry said he is, he would be delighted to hand off the coning responsibility to the events coordinator, so we'll connect to Larry on that.
Okay.
Um, the baseball, I'm sorry, the basketball court, we were able to make that repair before the end of the year, so that money was used in the last fiscal year, it's a temporary measure to make the court safe while we look at a long-term plan with rec for use of the, for use of the park, now there is a, an extended pad around the back of the net and there is no hole in which to fall, and there are also pads coming for the, for the pole and new nets. The 9/11 memorial, the sign has been installed, Evan Carmesino, not Evan. Oh, and Carmesino completed his Eagle Scout project. Folks probably didn't know that there, there was a, there is a 9/11 memorial in McConville Park, now you'll see it with a sign, and the other, the other signage that happened in McConville Park was that the, the big pine tree in the park was actually the first village Christmas tree at the fan stand, so it was planted after that first Christmas and has grown, it had Christmas, Christmas lights tangled up in it, rec worked with the tree advisory board and pulled out the Christmas lights, and I mean, I don't think that they were, they were the original Christmas lights, but at some point they got hung and didn't come down. And Eliza is working with rec on their draft a draft of a comprehensive plan. For clerks, so that there'll be more talk on that as it goes along. We have four events. So it's not my voice all the time, does anybody else want to, just, well, you won't, you won't know them. They're there. Um, the June 18th, there is a proposal to use McConville Park, I'm sorry, Mayor's Park, the pavilion on the 18th from 2 to 6 for a barbecue by a West Street resident. Any concerns, discussion?
Well, I think that's what we want the parks to be used for.
Would you like to make a motion on that one?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application by Claire Goldstein for her event on June 18th, that, at McConville Park? No, Mayor's Park, sorry, the pavilion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Laura, from a process perspective, these have gone through the rec commission already, they come to us after they have done the initial okay, and we've asked for, there is no description of the event, of what the event is for, so that's going to be added into the application. So, 6:25, 1 to 6 p.m. graduation party by the Murphy and Thorpe family, any discussion, questions? Okay, a motion please.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the Jillian and the Murphy and Thorpe party on 6:25 at Mayor's Park Pavilion.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um. With that helping, would like to use Mayor's Park Pavilion on July 30th from 2 to 8 p.m. for barbecue, another resident wanting to have a barbecue, which is great. Any questions, discussion? It sounds like water is available, yes.
Yeah. There's a spigot. And there is.
And it comes as part of the fee. Happy to report that this spring, we've properly separated water and wastewater there, so now there's clean water. Small things, you catch up on the different things, okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, motion please?
I'll make a motion to approve the application by Roseanne Helfen for Mayor's Park Pavilion on July 30th.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, this is a, this is not a village resident making this application. It, the sponsoring organization is Global Impact Productions, it's a bike race to raise money for AIDS response, it's called Breaking AIDS Ride. It has happened in the pavilion before, simply a rest stop along the way for, for the bikers from 7:45 to 10:00 in the morning on Sunday, September 11th. The rec commission recommends waiving the fee because this is a not-for-profit fundraising event, and so the first question is, are we comfortable with waiving the fee?
I think that's okay.
Okay, so may I have a motion on the request?
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Jessie Pasachow Pasakow, before you sit in Mayor's Park Pavilion Sunday, September 11th.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the only, well, the one comment I would make here is that excuse me, we need to make sure that this, Lillian, I guess this is mostly a comment for you, but we need to make sure that the police department is coordinated on this as bikers are coming down Fair Street, just to make sure they're safe. Okay, so we have finished standing boards and committees.
Got it.
Thank you.
Question. On all of these applications, I noticed that the the village offices, police department, highway, so on and so forth, is it supposed to be checked that they receive this information?
That's, that's the next step, and Lillian is actually working on revising the, the format so that there is a checklist per event that said, right now, we've got, we've got the application approved, now I have informed all of these parties, everyone's on board. And there will also be a check-in at the event site to make sure we all agree the condition of the, of the pavilion is X, and when you turn it in at the end of the night, we all agree the condition is Y. So, we're working out process that hasn't existed before.
Great.
Okay. Our municipal and government partner is town of Phillips Town, take it away, Deputy Supervisor.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me, the new highway garage is moving along slowly, but I'm like, happy to say that today, the first load of steel showed up this, this morning around 8:30, so things are moving along, and we should be completed sometime in October is the plan. Our e-waste collection, I just kind of took the backseat because of the food scrapping program came up. Regarding the food scrap program, we have about 75 people who signed up so far, and we're looking for anyone else who wants to participate, here's the the cans that we use, we have one that sits on your countertop, and you put your food in there every day, has a, put a bag in here, then at the end of the week, wherever that's full, you put it in this at the end on Saturday mornings between nine and three, bring this up to the landfill or recycling center and drop your food scraps into the, into the bins that we have up here. So far, it's been pretty good, I know last week we filled up three 55-gallon cans with the six-years-old people that are participating, and so we're looking for more. It's called curbside that picks up the actual food scraps on Tuesdays for us, also, if any restaurants are interested the curbside, you can contract with them directly to pick up your food scraps as a, as a restaurant, or anybody's interested in looking to pursue that, we can give you the information on that if someone's interested. We passed a resolution to sign the Los Abag agreement between the Phillips Town and and Garrison ambulance course, there was only a few members that actually qualified for this this year, it's, ambulance course is pretty tough to make that Los Abag, there were a few that unfortunately, except the resignation for Christopher, it's a climate smart community. She's been doing, she's only been doing this job about a little over a year, but she was very enthusiastic, and we're sorry to see her leave. But that same evening, we also dedicated or had a ribbing ceremony, the ribbing cutting ceremony for our dual charger. The dual chargers up there at the town hall. There's a, it's a pay-as-you-exit type of thing, it's a dollar per hour, and it's, you're on the honor system, so there's a box there, so if you charge in a car, most charge takes about four hours. So, we're hoping people are honest and put the $4 or $5 into the box as they charge their car. We, we, we had, we're hanging the progressive pride flag up in front of the town hall, I met with Sean earlier on June 1st, and we put that up. I met with Sean earlier on June first and we put that up. He chose a spot where he wanted it and it would so be up there for his entire month of June. We also pass a, passed a resolution supporting the proposal statute that would amend the general municipal law and civil law and retired social security law for the public health people, emergency service people. This is, this will be, at some point in time, they will have, be eligible to get benefits through the town. They're gonna have to pay whatever the price is. We're not gonna supplement any of those costs, but it's something that, you know, we thought it was a good thing to do. Some, I don't know who the person was that did it, someone from the, from the state that night, and he's well aware, but he, he said it's stuff I passed this year on the state level. So that's, anyway, but at least something to look forward to. Laura Siglos, as you indicated, the new director of Phillips Town Hall, she was introduced to us the other, last week as well. She's very spoke very well. She seems very, very qualified for this position. He said he attracted to her just going into the building. She said as soon as she walked in the building, she had a very good feeling about it, the location and everything like that. So again, she's, like you said, she's got a lot of experience. Well, of course, and she was a part of, she was a part of working with Sandy Hook. She had all kinds of experience, so looking forward to working with her. Plan board is, as I indicated, every single month is still very busy with the Shakespeare and Hudson Highland Reserve. And as you indicated, we did John McNeil, the other, our part-time building inspector did start last week. And I'll mention to Jeff, Greg, about the report. Thank you.
Let's let Montgomery, who's not able to join us tonight, I'm pulling, she did ask us to make an announcement about a pride event happening. Formal, so I will, once I pull it up, I will come back and make that announcement for her. Just need to grab it. In the meantime, while I'm looking, we want to move on to our other organizations now. Would you like to?
Sure.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Gosh, good to see you, but I won't make any small talk. Let me just say that the reason I'm on is because I'd like to show our sincerity in, in asking all of you to at some point make room on your calendars for a sit-down meeting with the chamber board and maybe we can make a series out of it. We've talked about it, but I think we should try to get it on the calendar. We just want to make sure that the things we're talking about, some of which may just be in preliminary planning stages, you are as aware of them as we are so that nobody gets, that we don't get ahead of you and that there's no surprises. So like to request that when you can, and our timing could be whatever your timing is, we'd really like to have a sit-down meeting with the trustees.
Happy to do that. In fact, that was a request last month and we, we suggested that you coordinate with the clerk. So we'd love to, we'd love to sit down.
If the, if the, if the ball's in our court, I'll take it from here.
Yeah, just suggest some dates to, suggest some dates to Jeff. And now if there, if there is a quorum of us, it is, would be a public meeting. So we would need to post that meeting. But if it's, it's, it's useful for you to be with all of us, we can do our best to get at the time with everyone.
Good, okay, well, sorry, I, I, I'll pick up on that and take it from here. Thank you for the, go ahead.
No problem. Can you tell us about, it sounds like you've got first Thursdays coming. Could you tell us about that? I'm sorry, third Thursdays.
Sure. The, the, the dates of the third Thursday are in your report. The first one is June the sixteenth and I think for the most part Kathleen, it's, it's just an opportunity for the stores to stay open, stay openly. There's nothing, there's nothing particularly planned that I'm aware of unless of course the store, store owners want to do something, but it's, it's just to see if we can develop some traffic at, on that particular time and have it become kind of memorialized.
I think it's great that you're doing it on a non, what is not traditionally a visitor evening.
No, the, the idea is to give, is the idea is for it to be an event that is, we're making time special for our, our good local people who can come down and not, not have to swap people out of the way. So I, I, I think, well, let's hope it works well.
Great, thanks. And while we're on that topic, there is an item later in the agenda. We may as well take it up now that we're talking about third Thursdays. At Cold Spring in Bloom, the history museum set up a table in front of Village Hall.
We, we, yeah, we had a table. If, if you're agreeable, we'd be happy to do it again. We'd like to do it again.
On third Thursdays, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the request from, from Kathy at the history museum was to do another walking tour guide kind of thing and it was, it was great. Does anyone have any concerns with that?
Totally, and Florida, but that was a great initiative by the chamber.
Yeah. Okay, great. So Jeff, will you let Ms. Ward know that we're fine with that? Setting up a table?
Someone, you haven't tried to set up.
I would make a motion that we approve the request for a table in front of Village Hall on third Thursdays by the Putnam History Museum.
Second.
All in favor? Now you could let her know these, thank you. We'll take that off the agenda later because we've addressed it now. Okay, thanks Chamber.
Hey, you're welcome. Good evening.
You too. Okay.
Now, before you leave, have you mentioned the third Thursdays to the police department?
I, I don't know the answer to that, Jeff.
All right, Larry's on duty tomorrow. I'll let him know, just, we need to keep them in the loop for this, additional traffic. They should just be aware.
Okay, good idea.
Erin, Erin is the committee chair who's organizing the event and they were, she was still pulling together, they were trying to figure out how many people were participating, et cetera. I did have a conversation with her and let her know that she should connect to us and Larry, but I think that's coming. Okay, um, you've been listening to me a lot, so someone, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to what you said in my company. The event that she wanted to announce is the third annual Putnam Pride barbecue, is that right? No, parade. Sorry, parade in Brewster Village, Sunday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-two at one o'clock, gathering at One Main Street, march to Wells Park at ninety-eight Oak Street. And then there's going to be a gathering of speakers, vendors, music, et cetera. And people are encouraged to park at the train station as there is limited parking. Okay. Any reports from trustees?
I was working on a couple of things this month, but since the chambers here and on, there was a mention of C Street in there and we do have an update on C Street. The mayor and I met with the owners of C Street and they have proposed some dates that they definitely want and then they're sort of hoping and looking for opportunities, but they confirmed that they would like to request to run the autumn weekend tours again only on Saturdays and Sundays from September seventeenth through November thirteenth. And they're also interested in exploring the possibility of running a tour on summer week, like a summer weekday tour on either Wednesdays and or Fridays from July first through September sixteenth. The board hasn't had a discussion of this, well, I would recommend that we set up a workshop to discuss this among the trustees and also for, to give the public an opportunity to comment and air concerns or ideas and sort of really to understand the benefits and the problems that might come with, you know, this kind of decision.
It sounds like the summer, the summer stuff is really iffy because of fuel prices. If they could pull it off, they'd like to, but it doesn't, my gut is that it's not very likely.
They're looking for opportunities, but they're, you know, they're not even sure if this is an opportunity that's worthwhile.
Yeah.
So, so it's, it's really just up in the air at the moment. The only thing that sounds like they're fairly certain about is they, while they express, they're definitely interested in continuing the fall visits on weekend. So that's what we have for now.
That's great, thank you. People ask me about that all the time.
July first seems, I, I, as I said, it seems unlikely, you have to make.
Yeah, it's, you know, they have to sell tickets, so they can't sell them. But, but none of that is definite and we're, we're gonna have a discussion about that with, in, in public so everyone can be informed and share their ideas. I also spent some time looking at weed remediation in troubled areas, working on getting sort of a idea or getting a list of locations where the village in the past has sprayed for weed and pest remediation. And I'll be walking those areas and working with the local master gardener to come up with recommendations for the village. And in the process of those discussions, I've reached out to Cornell Cup Cooperative and Hudson Highland Land Trust and talking with the tree board. But a, a local member mentioned that we are a hub of monarch butterfly habitat areas that it needs to be kind of protected. So there's a couple spots on public land that I'm working with them to identify and sort of let our highway department know that they should avoid weed whacking in those areas. And then also I met with the Rec Department to discuss the signage down at Mayor's Park and also the, sort of a greater idea of looking at all of our park space as a big plan and like thinking of what we have, taking assessment and also what, what residents are asking for. So that's gonna go slowly probably, but we're, we're working on it.
Right. That's awesome. Laura, anything from you? If you have anything to report, great.
Because I'm learning from a call, but I'll, so, but I'll mention it that I scheduled a time to talk with Crystal Ford before she leaves to learn about one of the best practices of climate smart and any lessons learned about funding. In particular about the like clean, there's a clean energy program that sounds like it's more fruitful in terms of funding from Phillips Town. So just gonna learn from her a bit before she goes.
That's right.
And it looks, that's all right, and look forward to her bringing back on when we find out. I know that she.
We're gonna get a replacement for her as well. We will get a replacement.
Yes, I know that, no, I know that, but, but it's a good chance to catch.
Yeah. So she's very enthusiastic about this position, I really, good mission.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Okay.
She made it fun, you know?
Taking that initiative. Okay, couple quick things, we've hit, we've hit a number of them. I did go to Royal last Thursday and saw the garbage and recycling separations. I'm going to go back tomorrow when they're actually handling our yard waste after three o'clock. Three of us can't go, but two of us can, if there's anyone available who wants to go. And I will take, I will take photos. I did see waste that had been separated, but I want to be there and see how they're actually managing our, our waste, our yard waste.
Do they use two separate trucks?
They're using one truck. And, you know, Royal, Royal says that it is to reduce the carbon footprint in the village, which is a reasonable thing. But the question that, that folks have raised is, is that really, can you really get a clean yard waste stream? And they say yes, and I said, okay, show us. So. I will report now.
Of my neighborhood, they used to have two separate trucks.
Right.
You know, and tell you truth, I hadn't really noticed lately if they're using just one, take a closer look next, on Mondays when they come.
On the site visit, they said that we are the only municipality that they're doing yard waste for and that may be part of, that may be part of why they're doing it the way they are, but obviously there are more questions that we need to ask. Okay.
Find out, no, just where it goes then, right? Do they have a, do they have an ambulancy facility?
I'm sorry that I can't remember the name of the location, but it's near Poughkeepsie that then comp, that then composts the yard waste. And the limitation was extended to see that site too, if we wanted to. So I'll report back. Let's see, the Community Day folks are, are rolling. They're putting together some really creative ideas to, to make Community Day really community-focused, resident-focused. We're meeting with first responders, police, ambulance and fire next Wednesday. In my mind, it was today, but it's next Wednesday to talk through logistics and see if the ideas they have are workable before they go headlong. So I'll have more to report on that soon.
In the day to.
It's the Saturday of Labor Day, rain date Sunday. I think it's the third and the fourth.
Do we have anything up on our website regarding this?
Not yet.
Okay. Maybe we can do like a, I don't know, calendar, save the date or something so that people know, because I've been, people have asked me what day, they're confused when the fireworks are.
Yes. And for the record, they're not gonna be fireworks in the village, but West Point does its fireworks on the Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, real parade or anything, right? We're not doing anything.
Earlier in the year, we decided as a board to focus energy on one big community event at the end of the summer, celebrate the close of the season. So you can still watch for West Point. Okay, um, I, I need to make an apology. The end of the week was very busy in Village Hall last week and we were not able to communicate with the applicants for the ad hoc advisory committee on short-term rental, short-term rentals before the current came out. So people learned of their appointments or their not appointment, not being appointed via the current, and I apologize for that. But I think it's important to note that we, this board did have a frank conversation in public about whom we were, I was recommending and the trustees wished to appoint. And I, I think that's a hallmark of this administration that we are having those conversations in public and we're doing our work transparently. So correspondent, we have received correspondence related to appointments and it will be placed in public record with these minutes. And I make note that trustee Starbuck and I misspoke regarding Peter, Peter Farrell, who had not in fact participated in public comment periods during the initial passage of the local law. I had understood, I had remembered him speaking in, in public session and those, I think those were conversations that we had separate from, from the public hearing. So I apologize, Peter, for that. Thank you to everyone who did apply and as confirmation, those who were appointed are Branis Basilevich, Travis Fife, Tom O'Quinn, Mary Ann Remy, Megan Shay, Jennifer Swarick and Lara Valoto. Of these seven, four are currently S T R operators. Only one, Ms. Remy, applied for an operating permit and she was denied a permit under the three-year resident requirement of the current law. The remaining three, Mr. Fife, Ms. Shay and Ms. Swarick are concerned residents who do not operate S T Rs. There was some concern that we had placed all short-term rental operators on the committee and that is not the case. I'm still considering appointment of a chair for this working group, so I don't, I don't have a recommendation, recommendation for that this evening, but hope too soon. I want to chat with a couple folks before I make a recommendation. Anything else from board? So we have a couple of items of business. Acknowledging receipt of thirty-day advance notification for liquor licenses. We don't take any action on these. We are just informed by the state that a request has been made for a license. There are two. One is a continuation of licensing for Le Bouchon and the other is the West Point Foundry, Bed and Breakfast. I did speak with Dr. Sutton today. This is not, it is not a request to sell alcoholic beverages or for events. Those would be one-day licenses that is so that when guests arrive, she can serve them cherry and wine and sit on the porch and look at the river. So that's, that's just for, for information. Next is when we were filling the vacancies left by trustee Curdo, we skipped, or I skipped, I guess, authorizing a trustee to serve as an authorized signature at M and T Bank. I would like to appoint Catherine to do that. Any discussion?
She sort of says the treasurer on the chamber board is gonna find out, so I think she's a good choice.
And this is mostly for signing checks that are first reviewed by other trustees in the audit process that you're doing. So there are multiple, there are multiple eyes on checks before they're signed and they're, they're cross-signed. Do we need a vote on that? Okay, so I would make a motion to appoint Catherine as an authorized signatory on the M and T Bank.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have tabled Veronica's potential placement. We have minutes. We have to table April sixth because the only folks who can vote on that are Eliza, Tweets and Catherine, and Catherine is not with us. Okay, April twenty-first. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-first and on this one, Eliza and Tweets and I can vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And Laura was not yet with us on the board. So she is. Not even voted on that one. Similarly, May third, it's the three of us again, and make a motion to approve the minutes of the May third meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, May eleventh, again, the three of us. This was the monthly meeting, the motion to, but first I should say I did, I may, I requested a change this afternoon. It was on the public, public comment section, there's guest on your, your public comment, guest on Alonso thirty-four, West Street, thank. Gaston Alonso 34, West Street thanked the board for considering inserting less toxic alternatives for weed management in the village parks. That was the only change I had for those minutes. So that is a motion with that modification.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Any public comment? From our, from our studio, well, not the studio audience, from our out in the world audience.
Hi. Hi. I have a couple of, of comments. One is once again to, I guess, I'm, I'm in the precision of giving thanks a lot. But I wanted to give thanks for planning to hold a public meeting before agreeing to a contract with the C Street. That's a very welcome change in transparency in government in the village. So I guess this week I'll thank you for that. And then the second point is about the bottom flag flying last week. It's a very quick point. But I think it's important to recognize the state and local governments around the country do fly the progress flag, including our neighbor Beacon, where the mayor for the last three years has held a public event to celebrate the raising of the flag. So despite a lot of information floating around, there is a way for municipalities to do this. If hundreds of local governments across the country have managed to figure out a way to fly the LGBTQ pride flags, I think Cold Spring can figure that out too. So I want to ask you to, don't listen to the fallacious legal arguments or whatever else is being thrown around. Pick up the phone, call your colleagues in these towns, talk to other public officials, find out how they do it. And don't be afraid because after all, it's already been done. Right? So I hope that, you know, you can find the empathy and the political courage to figure this out. I know that you can. I think none of you want to be known as the public officials who, you know, can, the future flying of the pride flag. I know that you don't want to do that. So I'm just want to ask you to please do the right thing, work with other municipalities, figure out how this is done. So we can continue to do that in the future. Okay. So thank you.
Thank you, Gaston. Just for clarity, the, the flag is flying in three locations through the month of June here in the village, at Village Hall, at Mayor's Park and on the bandstand. And I just want to make a clarification. This, the under discussion is not the banning of the flying of the pride flag, progress flag, but the consideration of a larger policy related to flag flying in general. There will be a resolution before the board and there will be public discussion. It's not yet ready for review. So the village has three, and the town, the town is, is having the same conversation. The village has three options right now. One is creating an open forum to allow diverse expression via flags without restriction beyond that of hate speech as it's defined under the law. As you're aware, there is, there is a world of free speech that is not defined as hate speech, but is still absolutely abhorrent. And that's, that's where it gets tricky. You know, think about, think about a request to hang an NRA flag or a right to life flag or a socialist flag or, you know, and you can think of any, any number of things that would be would be difficult. The, the result would, could be a local culture war centered on village government. And it's simply unnecessary and entirely unproductive in my view. Second option is establishing a policy for which, for which kinds of flags could be displayed on municipal property and review each request under the criteria of that policy, effectively taking control of the speech that is making it government speech. This is similarly problematic. It could lead to an endless pride, not in my name. By those fans by the speech. So again, I, I see it as not productive and a huge distraction from the actual work of village government. And the third option is to hang no flag after the end of June. So the scenarios that are laid out in option one and option two are, I think, where areas of concern lie, both at the village level and at the town level. But I would say that, that last week's current article, and particularly the pullout quote in that article, created the impression that I as mayor and this board were saying that we're creating the policy because the pride flag itself makes people uncomfortable. And that is not the case at all. And Gaston, to your point, I, none of us are afraid to fly the flag. It's flying now. I'm sure that, that that flag does make some people uncomfortable, but that's not the point. In fact, I think that I say for all of us, and I say that we are delighted to be hanging that flag, the pride progress flag. An issue here is the downstream ramifications of having hung it on municipal facilities. And it's an issue that we need to discuss further. And we'll do that with the public when we take up the draft policy.
And I just kind of, kind of follow up just quickly.
Just one moment. Trustee, trustee Starbuck has the floor and then I'd be happy to come back to you, Gaston. Thank you.
Oh, just as an aside, I grew up in a city where the KKK asked to burn a cross at Christmas every year. And yeah, Christmas, that's how they celebrate Christmas apparently. So the city officials said no, and the KKK took them to court. And because the city did, you know, fly pride flags and other, other expressions that were positive, the court upheld the KKK's right to burn the cross in the center of the city every year. And as a school child, I saw that every year and it was kind of frightening. So that's the kind of thing that we'd like to never open an opportunity to because we can, I'm happy to put the pride flag on every portion of town. If everyone did that, that'd be great. But I, and, and that symbolizes and tells visitors in our, our community, what kind of community we are. But I don't want to see symbols of hate being put on public property and I would hate to be on this board and be forced into that by the court.
Okay. I watched the, the meeting from last week and I read the current article. I also read the mayor's letter that was placed on the current website on Monday. And I'm not going to speak for the NRA or the right to life groups or even the socialists. I'll leave it up to members of their group to express how they feel about those words. But I do think that having put up the flag on June 1st and by the end of the day, having voted to never, voted to only fly the US flag, the POW flag, the state flag, which is not flown in the future, sent a really, really problematic message. It said something like the LGBT flying the flag have been a mistake and that from now on you wouldn't fly in Cold Spring. The LGBTQ flags are not like other flags. They represent the pain and the hopes of people who grew up and who lived their lives in the, with the whole of society, including their closest family members, which should protect them, but often don't. Telling them that they should not exist, that their love, their safety, their lives are less valuable than others. So I just want to ask you to imagine what that feels like, especially for a young person, to let yourself imagine that. And then to imagine that you see the people and yes, municipalities, local governments all over the country do this. They value you enough to fire a flag whose mission of inclusion and equality of love says that to every LGBTQ person that you matter, you have value, we will protect you. We will protect you. That is what the flag that was voted to not fly again means to us. That's what it means to teenagers in this town who may be being bullied or contemplating suicide. So that's why I think this really matters. I understand the concerns about lawsuits. I understand the concerns about free speech. I get that. But at the same time, again, other municipalities, other state governments flying the flag right now on city halls and in state capitals across the country. And nothing like what Eliza described is happening. Being a public servant means that, you know, being courageous and having the courage to do what is right, even if it's controversial, but it doesn't seem to have caused any controversy in this town yet. As I understand from the meeting last week, the only request that had been brought was the Ukrainian flag and the pride flag. And if that's the case, I'm wondering why this concern about lawsuits or, you know, the KKK marching on town is coming from, there are people.
That's not the concern, Gaston. It's not, we're not concerned about KKK marching on town.
Okay. Eliza mentioned that. So Eliza mentioned that. Eliza mentioned that. So I just was, you know.
That's not what Eliza.
It's funny to that. What you said, you had grown up in a town where that had happened, right? And I understand that happens in towns. I don't think it's happening here. But more importantly, I don't want to get into an argument about this. I just want you to, one, imagine what it means to be invisible and threatened. And then to see your government put up a flag that says, we will protect you. We value you. Imagine what that feels like. Right? And then imagine within less than 24 hours, the town saying, we won't do that again. This is, I want you to imagine that and then to think about the fact that somehow other villages, other towns, other states have managed to figure out how to do this and not get, end up in the kinds of problems that, you know, you've mentioned. So it can be done. So just please reach out to the people who are doing it and find out how they're doing it. Cause we are as good as any of those other towns. As good as any of those villages. I'm not going to sort of think less of Cold Spring. If it can be done in Beacon, if it can be done in Antioch, California, if it can be done in the state house in Wisconsin, it can be done here.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So that's all I wanted to sort of ask and plead with you for. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other public comment? Or question from Highlands current? Anything else from trustees? Motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you for coming, everyone.
Good luck, everybody.